Take a motion. Second. Question, discussion? Roll call please.
Walters?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
DeVore?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Next item, new business. Action item number one. Consider motion to approve first reading of ordinance 2019-200, amending water rates. Gary, this is a adjustment due to what is being passed down to us from Des Moines Water Works, correct?
That is correct, sir.
Anything else you want to speak to us on?
There is no addition in sanitary sewer. And council has a copy in front of them of current rates as of July 2018, which would have been mid-year after the last rate increase by Des Moines Water Works. The, all of the communities that are enlisted in there are primarily served by Des Moines Water. The only one I question is Indian.
Questions, discussion?
I'm curious about how come on.
Because they're part of, uh, no, they're part of Polk County.
They're part of rural Polk County?
Yes.
That's right.
Yes.
So they're paying less than we are, and we participated, two of about $12, $10. And they fluff them off.
And I can't, and I don't quite understand.
Like that's something we need to talk to Des Moines Water Works about.
Can't, I'm, I know that's going to change here shortly.
What's it change?
The Polk County Rural Water, because they're going to be making some improvements out there.
That's right.
And right now, they're working on an open system. There'll be upgrades to that system.
Weren't we told originally when we decided to participate in this, I wrote the big check, were we told, this is, this is how I remember it, that we were going to get by for a third of what those communities who didn't participate were going to pay?
I really, I don't know, sir. I can, I can tell you that Polk City is definitely doing quite well with its water rates. And I assume that it's part of Polk County Rural Water, because that's where it started from, with Ziny, and Polk County bought it. I do not know when they had their increases. I could do some more research.
Questions, comments? Move. So move.
Second.
Roll call please.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Walters?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
DeVore?
Motion carries. Item two, consider motion to approve first reading of ordinance 2019-300, amending chapter 65, stop or yield required. Who's speaking to that?
Very quickly, Mayor, this is, we have an operating signal at Third and Bridge. We not have the statutory stop required and signal to be followed on our books at this time, and just replace that signal and the stop and yield. And the, what's required at a stoplight, uh, be put into our city ordinances, being the first one.
Take a motion.
Second.
Second. Roll call.
DeVore?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Walters?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Would there be any reason to not consider second or third, or to consider the third at the next meeting?
We can definitely do that, sir.
That means formality at that point? Okay, let's have that up there.
Yeah, that is very efficient. I like turning lefts. Saving time. Well, I mean, stress.
Motion carries on that. Next item, consider motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 2019-400, amending chapters for municipal actions. I think that's on you.
Yes, this is the one that I was talking about during the previous, whatever the proper title of the, is that?
Work session.
Work session. So a year, a year ago, the legislature, so in the hit into the past, for a long time, you only had, were entitled to a public defender when you were charged, the Colonel charged a serious misdemeanor or above, something indictable. Let's place your change and then said, Amy, stop me if I say anything errant here. They changed it where you were required to have one for a simple misdemeanor, which would-
If there was a-
A possibility of jail time.
Was a possibility, right.
And so what a lot of departments did, or H.C. did at the time, was just to not write any, and that's only, so if we wrote something in our city code to arrest somebody and there's possibly jail, the city would be on the hook for their public defense, for paying for their public defender. So we changed as a department to just writing state codes, so then it's not on us to pay for the public defender. That caused a dip in our revenue. I touched base, and Lindsay brought my attention, I touched base with Amy and asked what we could do. Amy did some research, don't mean to speak for Amy, but came back, it's another community said amended their city code. Basically, what this is saying is if we, an example, we catch somebody shoplifting it, come and go, and it's under $200, it's a simple misdemeanor, it covered by our city code, this just says that they won't be subject to any jail time if we arrest them for our city code, they will just, their punishment can only be the fine.
That removes the ability for the imprisonment, which removes the ability, or the requirement that we would have to pay for their public defense.
You're saving us money.
Well, in the long run, yeah. Raising revenue and lowering-
Get it, I get it.
Yeah, it takes away any possibility that you would have to pay for public defense costs.
Initially in this law change, there was a couple of chiefs that got hooked with a, a large defense bill, and then, you know, they were coming over to chief's meeting saying, don't charge city code, don't this, you know, we got caught for 10 grand on this charge, you know, and the, the defender took it through every step of the court process with depositions and suppression hearings, things like that, and it cost us a lot of money. So that's why I made the decision I did at the time, looking at, after conferring with Gary and Lindsay and Amy, uh, I, this is by far the best option for us.
For me. And we have Chris, questions for Chief?
And that's what'll make our revenue higher than projected for the next budget year. I would estimate at least, uh, the total will be around 15,000 compared to previous years.
Although this year, we did miss out on the revenue that we projected higher on offset for a year.
Six months, six months of the year till we change this back.
Questions, comments, motion? Appreciate you catching it.
Well, Lindsay caught her.
Whoever, whoever did in there, so move.
Second.
Roll call please.
Vogel?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
DeVore?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, consider motion to approve first reading of ordinance 2019-500, amending chapter 41, public health and safety. Got this one. Tracy's got this one too.
So this is, uh, it's kind of two parts of this that were important for us as the police department, was I had a lot of requests for people wanting to bow hunt in town, so we defined how they can do that within this amendment, that they have to go through the, the city and, and this fate, the controlled bow hunting program, uh, through Polk County Conservation. And then also, it changed, uh, how they can, there's regulations on how they can target practice in town with the bow, the safety requirements for that, not getting into the details with that. And then it changed the throwing and shooting and charging weapons to limit what people can actually utilize within city limits.
Anything different than most everybody else?
No, this is pretty common throughout the metro, and Amy probably speak better to that, but I've, I researched a lot of the ordinances, we're pretty much on par with everybody else.
Shake off.
It's just the fans running because it's hot up there. It's about 10 degrees hotter up there than that. Sorry for the disruption.
Man, I know, you have, uh, complaints about, that happen, practicing.
No, not really. This is more just aimed at being more practical for as we grow, and as our, you know, kind of a little more denser population wise. And then this also kind of the only, here I talked, the only way someone could hunt towns, I had to tell them they could. Well, I, I'd like to have a more structured process in place for that, where they, under this, they'll have to, and I'm actually going to meet with Urban L.P.D., has probably the most comprehensive controlled deer hunting in the metro area. I'm going to meet with their person on Friday, the officer that runs that, and I'd like to model it, and it's a very structured, they have to apply, there's a background check, they're issued a permit, city keep in their car, they have to go through the county conservation program and do a qualification course to show proficiency, they have to have a DNR bow hunting safe course certificate, so it's a pretty involved process, but that covers make sure we're not just telling someone to hunt that hasn't gone through all the steps, that we know they're going to be safe, and they're following proper caution.
I'd like to refer to Councilman Anderson only because I know he spent countless hours attending deer, uh, meetings over the years, and I'm just curious your comments.
First of all, I come in, this is something we've talked about for 10 years.
Yeah.
I go to those Polk County Deer Commission meetings, or they were called, and say, what are you, say, our rule?
Yeah.
And I don't know if complaints per se, but I know we have, we have had in the past a lot of calls and concerns, about people parking somewhere, leaving their pickup truck, getting out, walking down the street, full camouflage.
Yeah.
Yep.
They're blowing arrows.
And these-
But I don't, I don't know if those are complaints, certainly been called concerns there.
We'll have a registry of everybody that's, can be doing it, we'll have their vehicle information, they're going to be using to do it, and it'll be very comprehensive, and then when we get that call, we'll need to be able to say, well, I don't know, we'll probably have it on the desktop computer in cars, and the officer can just look at it, tell county, well, that's one of our licensed, you know, our city permitted deer hunting.
Porsha running out of timber to come inside Polk City, we are.
And, and there's, it doesn't change any of this, but we also, just for information, we're looking at doing a joint measure with Polk, because they, they're going to start moving their suburban urban deer hunting program up into the Polk area, around the city where that's due competitively, so, uh, I don't, I don't speak for them, I'm just going by what I've been, been told during my research. So this'll tail nicely with that, we work together.
Thank you, like I said, thank you for good counseling.
Thank you.
It's been needed to- That punt, or lookout, your kitchen window, you can see them out there standing.
Yeah. Yeah, there'll be, uh, some useful research, but if I have my way, there'll be, uh, distance limitation from a home, and, and there'll, there'll be a lot of safe catches placed there.
I think that's already a state law.
Yeah.
Hundred feet of, I think, deer. I know there is a rule.
Take a motion? Second. Roll call.
Walters?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
DeVore?
Vogel?
Motion carries. Next item, consider motion to approve resolution 2019-003, amending Snyder, approving, sorry, approving Snyder and Associates' November 2018 invoices in the amount of $16,377. Roll.
Vogel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Walters?
James.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, Third and Bridge Signalization Project. Item A, consider motion to approve resolution 2019-004, approving change order number one in the amount of $10,910.
Um, yeah, um, then probably the main thing with that is, uh, that was the addition of vehicle detection to the temporary signals that are out now, it's discussed with city staff to be sure that that was something that went on. Uh, and then there's also, that also comes just with the sanitary sewer manhole and, uh, the mill and overlay of the asphalt where the island, that stop island, that's actually was an add-on, but it's kind of in lieu of, because they didn't remove the asphalt, it's actually cause safety, is an add-on, because that was item, not-
Questions? Second. So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Walters?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
DeVore?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item B, consider motion to approve resolution 2019-005, approving pay out number three in the amount of $19,187.
It just covers work, Jane, the second.
Yep.
Second.
Roll call.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Walters?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
DeVore?
Motion carries. Go ahead.
Before we move on, has anybody heard anything about?
All positive.
It's with me. Friend of mine has put it out.
Yeah, I'm sure. Moving on to item seven, um, presentation of new water slash sewer billing format. That's staff, right?
Very quickly, um, last year, with changes in the legislature became quickly apparent that, um, sometime in the future, we're going to need to change our format. Currently, as most of you know, we are utilizing postcard. This is no longer a postcard, this will be a regular envelope that we all love, kind of bill envelope that, well, uh, there's been a lot of work by staff on this, and Jenny, actually, the point person on this, and came up with some, uh, the additions to the bill, if you will, and with that, Jenny, if you want to kind of go through, uh, what the bill is, how it works.
The biggest change, and the most positive change on this, is because they're larger, we can get more information. More information means we are doing away with the codes. You remember your postcard bills, it says WA, it says RC, and then you have to look at the back, figure out what they mean. Now, at the very top here, it'll spell it all out. So you've got your line item, and actually what it is, instead of having to compare it to a code. So that should reduce a lot of questions or confusion. Everything else, as far as the format, is basically the same. You have your present and your previous reads for your meters, you've got what the total consumption is, and then how much the cost is. The nice little add-on we have is now this graph, which it's kind of hard to see up there, but it basically gives a year overlay of history. So it shows what you used January of this year compared to January of last year, and then it does a 12 month. So if you think, gosh, my water consumption was really high this month, and it's December, and you had family over, you can quickly look on your bill and go, wow, December of last year was really high too. It helps to kind of curb some of those concerns that some of our residents sometimes will call with, that are concerned maybe they had a leak, or, you know, did, did my family of four really add another 2,500 gallons of water usage, those kinds of things. Um, and then at the bottom is the portion that they'll tear off, it will be perforated just like the postcards had the little side piece. So the folks that do not pay, take advantage of our automatic billing program, that still pay their bill, will be able to tear that off, turn it in with a check, either in the drop box or mail it in. And then on the back, um, this then is just kind of a summary, just like the back is, where you can pay your bill. We did, where, again, more information, we were able to reference the online payments. So the folks that don't do the automatic payments every month, that still want to pay themselves online, it shows them where they can do that. And then down here in the description, it tells them that the water's billed in gallons, that the sewer is based on the water consumption, that the Rock Creek Sanitary Sewer Charge is a flat rate, and then that they can find a complete list of our rates here at City Hall, um, or online. And then the notice over here gives them more detail as far as how the penalties start and when they start. There's a lot of confusion, because we give our residents 30 days to pay their bill. When the new bills go out, if the past due isn't paid at that point, when the new bill is generated, they're charged 5%. Then if it's not paid by the fifth of the month, when we send out those shut-off notices, they're charged another $15. That clearly spells out, if you don't pay it by this date, this is what happens. If you don't pay it by this date, this is what happens. All the way down to where the water is then shut off, and then there's extra fees for that. And then the bold here is just our $25 fee if they do have a return payment. But if you go back to the front page, um, I guess, any questions, thoughts?
I'm just curious how many people we still mail them out to versus how many you're sending electronically at this point?
We're about 50%.
Are we?
Um, four years ago, we only had e-bills, probably 10 to 15% of our residents. Um, we e-bill about 900 now, and we have 850-ish that go out in the mail.
Only reason I was asking is because clearly you've got to stuff off.
We do. Um, with the help of Lindsay, we're working on, uh, I didn't know they made these kinds of machines, but it's a folder inserter machine, so it'll actually fold and stuff the envelopes. And our, we are gonna have our postage meter number on our envelope, so we save a penny from having to run them through the postage meter or put stamps on them.
We thought about putting some communication out ahead of this, um, and encouraging people to sign up for e-statement if they're not already.
Yes.
That would be a good reminder.
My plan tomorrow, after you guys have all seen this, will be to then post this on our social media page, so you can see it.
And then do you have that on here of how to, you know, if somebody might not act on it, okay?
Yeah. And then there's still going to be the message area here, if there's information we want to share with our residents, month after month, different things, like we'll do a pet tag reminder, everybody needs to license their pet before March 31st, we'll put that in that little area. The other nice thing about this is now that they're going out in envelopes, should we have the need to send a flyer? We can put it right with the bill and send it, similar to what you see when you get your stuff from Mid-American.
I, I think that's real positive, so when there's going to be temporary shut-offs for sewer, or water line repair, people want to get that notice?
Hydrant flushing.
Yeah, that sort of thing, yeah.
As long as it's an event that we know prior to the third, you know, the second to last business day of the previous month, we'll be able to get them out. You know, if it's something that happens mid-month, it won't be in there, but, um, but it'll definitely be good. The sanitary sewer, the project that we just did last week, instead of the Public Works guys having to go door to door, we would have been able to mail those ahead of time.
Well, I think this is, I applaud you guys for the time, I know you guys spent a lot of time working on it, and this is a, you know, maybe even a long overdue change, but, um, I guess if it took running out of postcards, then so, so, so.
I don't think it's overdue, we would have been with those postcards from 67.
No, I know, they've been around a while, so, no, this is great, yeah.
I appreciate the time and effort, it's obviously a great step in the direction, more people can communicate, do it online, better, you know, but, and that'll increase.
And just out of curiosity, on that same note, of those 50%, are you kind of that point with ACH too, or are you still getting a lot of?
We're about that point too.
ACH?
Yeah, the majority of the people that get e-bills do the ACH, there are a few that don't. Um, there are a few that do ACH that get paper bills, um, but the majority, you get an e-bill, it comes automatically out of their account.
So when you get new residents that come to town, you encourage?
Um-
She made me, I didn't know.
Didn't know there was a 610 mailing.
I may not offer the option to get paper bills, but I've had one or two residents in the last six months go, can I get a paper bill?
Sure.
And by sure, you know, we obviously offer that, but-
I think we bypassed, I think we kind of skimmed over it, but that graph down there is very nice to have, I think, just from a usage standpoint, and everybody be able to see what they're using, because we don't really have historical data to give to people, unless they call and ask, right?
Right. And off to the left of this graph, it gives the number of gallons you use per day, which to a lot of people is not relevant until you have a leak.
Yeah.
And your bill goes from 5,000 gallons to 10,000 gallons, you can quickly, yourself, figure it out by, once you get it repaired, you can look in your meter and say, has my usage went back to normal, versus, you know, us having to go out and do a reread for them.
And is that data that you've got there pretty readily available to you based on the software we've got now, you don't really have to change anything?
There's a lot of changes that have to happen behind the scenes, but we've already done the legwork with, uh, Data Tech-
Okay.
-to get everything programmed and ready. This is actually my account, so we've changed it to make sure we could print it correctly. We'll go live then at the end of the month by changing basically the, the tables and the information it pulls from in the software system, to do this format versus the postcard format. So it seems fairly simple and streamlined, but there was a whole lot of things that the gal on the other end of the phone was changing.
Like Ron said, we've been doing this since 67.
Yeah.
Jenny, there is a, if I'm not mistaken, because you brought up the leakage, there is some sort of flag that goes up if there's an extreme amount.
Yeah, we, we still have some old meters out in the world, um, that are over 10 years old. The meters typically last 10 years or a million gallons, so if you've got a low user, it may last past a 10-year point. So some of them don't have the data logging on them, which basically, if somebody calls and says, I don't know what happened, we can pinpoint when the leak started on the newer meters. But there are a few handful I have to mention that are still out there that I can't do that with, but the majority, yes, we have that capability.
Along those same lines, that, that chart like that, Mr. Sholley and I went and met with a citizen that was upset about their water bill, and, and Mike had that data with him and showed it to him, and it, it didn't solve their problem, but it sure kind of got, got their attention, you know, because it broke down right, well, here's the day you used this much, and now you're back to normal, I mean that, and if they get that on their own, I think that's a big, big improvement.
Mike, do you have anything to add on those water meters, if she was anything?
I had nothing to do with it.
Mike, do you support it?
I support it, boy.
Good job. So when do you roll this out?
Um, I will send out, do a social media push, and on our website here this week to prep everybody, but I anticipate that this will be live with the January bills. So it's January 31st, if you're good, and ACH won't look that different, because when, if you have ever printed your bill, if, I know most of you sitting up there are on e-bills, it prints on a full sheet, but it is going to be a different format on where the information's printing, the graph will still be available for those e-bills, um, but for the postcard customers, those that go out in the mail, they'll be getting a letter from the city of Polk City, so I don't want to shock too many people. I've tried to this month, we have a lot of residents that come in and pay their bill in person still, and I've tried to, hey, by the way, when you get your next bill, it's going to look like this, don't be shocked.
Don't shred that envelope that comes up with the city of Polk City on it.
I, I think it'll also help with a lot of lost mail. We have residents that don't get their bills, those postcards get caught in the sorting machine down in Des Moines Postal Service, so we'll get pieces of the postcard back, because they can read the city of Polk City, and then we have to try to figure out whose account it is to let them know we have their bill. Um, so it should help reduce some of the lost mail, or I didn't get my postcard, or I lost my postcard, or I misplaced my postcard, because this looks more like a bill.
Looks great, nice work by everybody. Good? Thanks.
Sorry.
Little bit of oral warnings.
Hey, guys, I'm kind of like that.
Man, okay. Uh, moving on, reports in particulars, the oral committee appointments. Did we get the new sheet in the packet? I don't think we did. We'll have the new sheet in the next packet, just so everybody can see it. Um, things to note on there that you've already approved is empty appointments. Uh, Dave, you were appointed to, uh, the Greater Des Moines Convention of Visitors Bureau as an alternate, so just thought you should be aware of that.
He's the first one.
Huh?
Who's the first?
Me, and then you're the alternate. And, um, on the appointments, uh, something we've been talking about for a while, so we're going to try and do something different here, thanks to staff for all, worked through my crazy thoughts. We're going to do some rotating chairs on finance and personnel committees, so that everybody gets a chance, so there's a nice, we'll get that out here in a couple of weeks as well for everybody to look at, so to be, you'll be on for a year as a, um, as a member, next year as a chair, and next year as a member, and next year as a chair, and then there'll be, uh, one idle year, so we'll kind of work through, everybody gets a chance on personnel and finance for residents. Ron, how long have you been on personnel?
A while, we have it.
Okay. 1967.
No, not quite.
Just checking, all right. Okay, just checking, all right. Um, and then a couple of quick things. Oh, we're setting a work session for the 28th, um, of January at 5:00 PM, as noted. Um, I also want to call special attention, in the last week, I went out and made presentations to Polk City Women on Tuesday and then did the chamber on Wednesday. Um, had about 25 at the Polk City Women and 50-plus, I think, at the chamber. Um, we did it up at the new Luana Bank Building, first time we'd had a meeting up there, which was great. Um, gave you an opportunity to talk about what Gary will hand out here in a second, just kind of state of the city update and stuff. Good, it was a real good, uh, good opportunity to get out and see some people. Anyway, that's all I have. Anybody have anything else?
I just wanted to note, um, in the consent agenda, that there was the resignation of Andy Johnson from the Parks Commission. Thank you for your service, five, six years, I don't remember, but for quite some time. Uh, Matt Blesky from the Arts Council, I don't know how long he's been on. Uh, but then also, um, I had an incident resident called me that I called Mike about 6 o'clock one night, felt rusty water, so some work down on South Side Drive. And, uh, Mike had it taken care of. Randy went down and flushed the hydrant out within an hour, residents were ecstatic, so I appreciate the, the quick, I had no idea what's going on.
Hey, hey, Mike, that's a good opportunity because I, I, I know from my previous half, um, but what happens when we have that and the impact that it has? You can have a leak downtown and the impact that will have here, just a quick, for anybody up here who might know, what happens when we have a leak or when we have a hydrant open? Yeah, what it, what it does to the main, the main system.
What it does causes a surge in the system. That surge, you don't know exactly where that's gonna be and that can stir up the water in one area of town, the leak is down in the other area of town. So it, it, it is, it's kind of random, to be honest with you. Um, that one wasn't as random because there was work going on down in that area.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a contractor and, um, yeah, so.
Yeah.
It got stirred up the water. It was a connection that had to be, had to be made.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but then we just had to go and flush the water out a little bit more and it all went away.
This one, thank you.
Yeah. Thanks.
Um, I forgot earlier, when we were talking about the signals, do we know yet, um, whether there will be any turn signals or if there will just be the turn lanes stuck there or is that still to be determined?
There will be when the.
I know, right now we're temporary, so the plan for the final is to actually have a turn signal.
Where I remember it is, has we got turn lanes, there will be a turn signal.
Yes. I seem to remember this.
Yeah, there's, there's turning lanes, turn signals, obviously part of that's if they're not on a crosswalk, getting paid.
Right. And will it be?
The timing on.
Both, you know, streets, there will be turn signals up close?
Yep.
And crosswalks and all the above.
Yep.
Yep.
Red lights on top of the signals.
Yeah, that's great, all the temporary up there. I know, yeah, a lot of people are happy.
Yeah. I mean, it would be.
Good to be on this step of the project and we'll get there.
End of May, right, Gary?
Yes, sir. Can you tell me what kind of work?
Yeah, I know, I know. Uh, Mike, I know, um, and just because I know there is a call-up, but if there are issues, uh, public works staff has been trained and they're up to speed on it. I know they had some issues first couple of days, so, you know, you guys have been out trying to figure all that out, kind of a new.
We know how to turn them into four-way flash without a problem.
Perfect. And you have a four-way stop to put up there, right?
And if there's an electrical surge up there, then we can put out a four-way stop sign. But really, under the temporary, it is the contractor that is under contract to do that work. So really, when the permanent one's in is when we have to do a little bit more, but it'll still be a contract with that company to fix the lights, whatever has to happen to them.
And you and I talked, so I'll let you speak to it, but what have you seen up there?
It's improved traffic flow immensely, especially in, you know, obviously during the high traffic areas of morning and evening. Uh, the, we used to have cars backed up on West Bridge up to the fairway driveway waiting to turn left in the mornings and the evenings. That has eliminated a lot of, a lot of potential conflict areas, what we call in traffic engineering in those driveways, because the cars just aren't sitting out there. And the driver behavior is much more sedate. You know, you see people whipping out in front of each other, causing people to veer off on the shoulder if they wait so long. And then they get angry and, and there's a traffic agitating situation and it doesn't have a traffic calming, uh, device up there. So I've been, no accidents, no, not even a thunderbender up there, so.
Thanks. Anything else? Glad to be back in business here, see everyone's faces, New Year. Butting mics, most computers.
I just want to commend staff with work they did on things tonight, everything, budget work. Your, your talk about explaining, helping us understand about this change of policy. And I think what you did with this water bill is excellent. I might even be able to get my wife to pay on that.
Oh, man. Did she watch this?
No.
Okay. Just asking. I'll come back to you because I know you have stuff. You guys have anything, anything, anything? Chief? Anybody? Gary?
Okay. As is common practice for the last seven plus years, um, we have a updated, uh, permit, report for 2018, calendar year 2018. 2018, uh, very good year for Polk City. I'm not gonna read the entire booklet to you, you can take that home, but, uh, there's some positives in that there was 89 new residential structures built in 2018. That is our highest ever. We added with that valuation, an additional 22,569. The average single-family or single-family and fourplexes seem to be, single-family and duplexes seem to be the, um, game of the week. We added 10 duplexes, so that's, um, that's 10 units. So that's five buildings. Largest ever.
I want to clarify that real quick. So your, your 89 rolled up is 79 single families plus then duplex?
Right.
Yep.
And those are done in units.
Which is where we got our, oh, sorry, that's where we got our total of 89.
Single-family structure values, uh, slightly down from 2017 and about, um, $450 per structure. This downtick that we've seen with 2016 being one of the highest years, we think is a direct coalition of having higher interest rates. A thousand-dollar house payment per month pays for more interest and less house. The, um, there's charts in there for value added. Taxable valuation is another item that is a good benchmark for where the city is going. And 2017, we're at 225 million in taxable valuation. This year, we're 246. So an increase of 21 million. Those are good numbers and just to put that in perspective, in 2013, 2013, we were half that number.
And then 2008, 10 years ago, we were nine.
Yes. Almost three times that number. There's a breakdown of where the taxable valuation comes from, be it residential, ag, commercial, industrial, multi-residential, utilities, uh, how much the military exemption is, that's all part of this report.
I think something else that's important on there, and I called attention to it over these last couple of presentations, was that our residential classification makes up almost 88% of our total value. And so obviously, as we continue to see some growth in the commercial sector, hopefully we'll see that residential classification number actually decrease, um, as we'd like to clearly see that commercial increase.
Thank you, sir. Um, new this year to this is total assessed valuation in Polk City. The reason that we take a look at, uh, total assessed valuation is to determine what our bonding capacity is. Bonding capacity is limited by IOFO, 5% of the total assessed value. Our total assessed value has increased to, um, our current 2018, 19 fiscal year to 419 million. Quickly doing the math, you can see that, uh, the city can bond about $21 million. And just in what we added in over the last year in total assessed value equals all of our current geo-bonds. Incredible growth in those areas. Very quickly, are we answering any questions after you guys start taking a look at these? There's a one-page, uh, I don't know what they call that, a one-page shout-out, I don't know what else to call it, uh, that was put together. Jenny was trying to get Iowa State colors on that, which I really appreciate. A lot of information in this document, please take a look at it. Basically, what you're reading here is a story of how did a city that lost the majority of its local option sales tax stay on track? And this is the story. This might be a good thing to put in with them water bills.
So I had a chance to review this information ahead of tonight's meeting, obviously, and, uh, presented this as I did with these last couple of groups that I mentioned. And when you get time, there is some really good information in here, but I do think that a couple of things to, to point out was the comment, the last paragraph, quite honestly, is that in conclusion, um, but that we did just finish a couple of our largest years, but again, we're still, it's very manageable. And I think staff's doing a really good job of keeping us, you know, where we need to be from this point. Um, we're, we actually were down, down one, two, three, I guess, in, uh, single families this year. So, um, we're kind of, 2016, 2017, 18, they're all right in that 70 to 80 or 79 to 82. So, um, compared to where it used to be, but all really good information. And then the other thing to note, um, as you guys are looking through it, is the last two pages regarding the active subdivisions in Polk City, um, and where we're at with some of those numbers, um, just good information to have there, kind of see. But thank you guys for putting all that together. I know you guys spent a lot of time on getting all the numbers.
Well, I think what's important is that we talked about, you know, we talks a lot about how many more houses are going up. But since 2012, it's really been, I guess there's other residences mature, like cottage homes and whatnot. But, but there's been 87, 87, 48 was 2015, 77, 88. So there's really, there's not this, you know, doubling of, of houses going up. It's really a, a manageable, I think, a healthy way to grow instead of, you know, there's a lot of lots available, um, but they're not, we're not cookie cutter houses. And the average house is with lots is $241,000. So although it's hard to, you know, that's the kind of, uh, folks that are, I guess, want to come in here, what did you?
341.
341. I'm just, sorry. Okay, 341, 341,000. So maybe that's why you're squirming. I don't know what I was looking at, but 341,000 is a very, it's, it's a scary number if you're looking to come into community, but it's a very, uh, healthy number for looking at this, to stay here and, and have an investment in the future with the house as well.
You know, and if you go back and you look at the historical data from 2014 and back, you gotta keep in mind, too, um, I think when we, end of 2013, we didn't even have 100 lots available to build on in town. I think we had 50. And so most of these active subdivisions have come on since 2013. And so even when they've come on, we've only basically maxed out at about 80 single families, um, you know, per year. So again, I think it's still staying pretty manageable.
Yeah, I just like those numbers, they're not up 30 or 40.
Right.
It just gets a little bit more scary with infrastructure and service. You know, there's lots of things that we're trying to stay on.
Good info. Anybody have anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
All the favor?
No, really?
No, really?
No, in the late 70s.